Okay, I got the message from IT that we're ready to go, so we will officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Jindal. Councilman Leonard. Councilman Rigsby.
Here.
Mayor Pret Henry Daly.
Here.
And Mayor Duper.
Present.
Thank you.
Moving on to our first item, which was a closed session, our city attorney will give us a report.
Yes, good evening. The city council has been in closed session on the item listed on the agenda, which was a conference with Labor Negotiator. There was information provided and direction given, but no other action to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, and moving into our invocation and pledge of allegiance, Councilmember Jindal.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, universal, liberty, and justice for all. Month of April, a lot of different cultures, a lot of different religions have had major events. To those that celebrate, Happy Easter. To those that celebrate, Happy Ramadan. And then to those that celebrate, Happy Pesky. All of these cultures, all of these religions, all of these festivals have one thing in common, community and bringing those together. So I hope that our council today and going forward can keep that notion in mind and make sure that all decisions that we take is for that community and to keep bringing those together.
Thank you for that. I know there was a request from the city manager's office to pull item number 12 out of the consent calendar. Are there any other items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay. No, I'm just pulling it off. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on any non-agendized item? This is our public participation period. Well, that was a lot of Ps. Looking over at IT to see if anybody's online via Zoom. Seeing no takers and nobody in the audience, we'll move forward. We will deal with conflicts of interest as they arise. So on to our scheduled items. Item number one is a presentation or an introduction of our Loma Linda postmaster, Mr. Manzi Clay. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Good to meet you, sir.
More Ps, a presentation.
Yep.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I was asked to come here tonight to speak on security of mail right now. Is there anybody I know, sorry, mentioned that there was an issue that you had? The biggest thing for the postal service is we attempt to fix the boxes as soon as they get fixed. The problem is with the COVID, there's so many boxes that have been broken into through so many different cities. So they're working through the district, through San Diego District, that's where I work for, with increasing the amount of maintenance people we get out to repair the boxes. Since I've been currently the postmaster of Loma Linda for two weeks now. Yes, sir. Oh, thank you. Right. Thank you. But the goal is always to fix the boxes as fast as we can, right? So what we're doing is I have a maintenance man on staff, and he's just repaired university. So we're going one by one. I'm going through my list of the boxes that are broken, and I'm working on fixing them. All right, and as far as increasing security for the citizens of Loma Linda, what we could do is check your mails as often as possible. That's one of the biggest things that I let a lot of customers know, because they have so many people out there who aren't working currently, that they're watching. You know, there's, I've been to many different cities, I've worked for so many different cities, and that seems to be the consistency. Is there, while you're at work, or you're out working hard, they seem to be watching, and that's when they get into your mail. As much as we would like to ask the sheriff's department or the local law enforcement to increase patrol, they're pretty busy out there. So, you know, not only do we work with our mailman to hope that they can actually be vigilant, be aware of what's going on. You know, if you see a broken box, we report it as soon as possible. They report it to me, and I report it to my maintenance staff, and then we repair it as soon as possible. So, like I said, I'm, just got here recently, but I'm working on it diligently to help repair a lot of the boxes in the city. If there's anybody, any questions anybody has for me in regards to anything that anybody can do, please let me know. Yes, sir.
Who's exactly responsible for community mailboxes, then?
Community mailboxes, if it's in apartment, usually, or it's in HOA, usually the apartment manager.
But what if it's not an HOA?
We have to go in and we have to repair the boxes. If it's an old or new box, the postal service will repair and replace it. But we do install all the locks, regardless of if it's an HOA or not. So we do replace them. It just depends.
Yeah, a few years ago, they, they, we, you know, ours got broken into, so we were told by the post office, oh, that's your job to repair. But we're not in an HOA or anything, so I couldn't figure out how you're supposed to get all the people in the community to pay for a mailbox when you're not in HOA, so.
Yeah, that's the difficult part. I recently, I was in residence.
We just did it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, he just mentioned, you guys just did it. But usually, the community works together. You know, it's, nobody wants to have to come to the post office, wait in line to get their mail. All right, that's my biggest complaint I get all the time. But usually, if you do talk to your neighbors or, you know, community, social media website, they do rile together, and they do buy an approved postal box. And all it is, is just getting the post office to install the lock. So I mean, it's a one-team-one-fight is what I call it, right? And that comes from being in the Marine Corps. But we all work together. We all work together. So if there's anything, the city manager has my actual direct cellphone number. If there's anything I could do to increase security in some way possible, maybe I'll go out and I'll check out the boxes, see what we could do around the communities, see what we could do, and I'll do that personally. You guys just let me know, keep me informed. And that's just not for, anyone in this room, it's for the whole city.
We, we, I have another question not related to security, but I don't know if anybody wanted to finish up anything.
Well, I've got other questions. Go ahead.
Okay, so.
Well, I think Jarby had a question.
Okay.
I, I want to let Mr. Clay know that a lot of the time is the homeowner, they don't, they don't report the, the broken mailboxes to us. And, and a lot of time, they, they will report it to the county sheriff. But if you know of the neighborhood that got hit a lot, please give me a call, so I will direct that information to our county sheriff, and we can work together and get it, try to catch the bad guys.
Definitely, definitely. The procedures that we have in play, the process, is if the mailman notices a broken box, they report it to us immediately. Right? We stop delivering the mail, we pull the mail, so that there's no theft there at the time. And then we report it as soon as possible, and we write it up so that we could get it fixed.
And if you let me know, they will provide extra control.
Got that?
Okay, this one, this one.
It's his turn.
Question related to this?
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Really big country, right? Has there been any research on if there's any particular type of mailbox that would work better in these neighborhoods that we could possibly install?
That's a tough question, because the best mailbox to have is a secure box, a secure lockbox, but community boxes are secured boxes. So you have, like, your individual, say you have a drive-up mailbox, we call it a curbside mailbox, where it's just right in front of your house, carrier pulls it out and delivers the mail. They have the little lids that are actually locked, and it's small enough where you can fit your magazine or your regular letters inside, but you, as the customer, can only actually access it from behind with the key. Those are the best boxes I've seen. But usually what happens is, in Redlands, I had a, a whole box removed, completely drilled it out of the ground, removed the whole box. So that's what it comes down to. It's just, they're getting more relentless and more aggressive. So, you know, it's just, like I said, the best thing right now would be to check your mails as often as possible.
So is there any solution, I, I understand there might be an expense, that would at least deter or reduce the number of mailboxes that are getting broken into, that we know of?
Give everyone a job. Seriously, not really, because the unfortunate thing is, they're out there watching, like I said, it's, there's always gonna be someone who sees or watches and attempts to steal the mail, and that's the bad part about it. That's why I say the best thing is to just empty your mailbox as soon as possible, and just make sure you have a secure box for yourself. It makes it comfortable for yourself. Something where you're like, all right, my mailbox is locked, secure, I'm comfortable with this. This is okay for me. And that's the best course of action right now.
Okay.
Yes, sir, you ready?
Yeah, this, this one. This one's probably not gonna be as easy to answer, so. So, probably a little less than a quarter of our city has a Redlands mailing address, even though it's in the city of Loma Linda. And years ago at the time, the, most of that was undeveloped, however, it's rapidly being developed now with some, some pretty exciting stuff that we're pretty proud of. Another Ps, man, I'm just like, I can't get past them. But, so what are the chances we could change some of these addresses to Loma Linda addresses? Because it creates confusion in the community, and, and, and believe me, we have churches that think that they're Redlands churches, we have, we have a VA facility that thinks it's a Redlands VA facility, because that's what it address says. And, and we really want to, to, you know, showcase Loma Linda. What are the realities of us doing?
That's actually something I'm actually working on. Coming from Redlands, I was, one of the biggest things they actually told me, my employees are like, please fix that, because we get Loma Linda mail all the time, and it's actually addressed to Redlands, but it's Loma Linda mail. So I have to work with the address management system. That's another department of the post office that I've actually been looking into since I've been here, and I have to get them to coordinate to change the address's format, so it goes directly to Loma Linda, instead of being addressed to Redlands. So it's something I'm in the process of working on.
Okay, you do that, you will be a hero. In fact, we'll name something after you if you want.
Well, heroes don't just wear capes.
We'll figure that out.
Post office.
Seriously, that's, that's, that's pretty, that's pretty neat to hear.
So, so what I'd like to do is, is meet with you and show you the city boundary, including the, the county area that.
That's in our sphere.
In our sphere.
Okay.
So that this way will be, when we annex them, we'll be all in, in the city of Loma Linda.
We could definitely do that.
Okay?
Is this the number I called earlier? No one answered? The cellphone, that one.
And if there's anything we can do for you anytime, please, please let us know. We appreciate, we appreciate you talking to us.
Yeah.
Any other question? Okay. Ron's got like seven questions for you.
Thank you for coming tonight. I mean, I kind of prompted this, and I know we're well beyond USPS regular hours, so we appreciate you being part of the community like this. What prompted my request that you be here is I've had, I happen to live in a neighborhood where our box has been broken into twice in the last three or four months. And about a year ago or less, it was broken in before that. The last time they repaired it, it, it was literally days before it got busted open again. And, and because we have a fairly active neighborhood, I mean, we all know each other and so forth. And they know that I'm on the city council, and because I asked them if I could put signs in all our yards. And so, you know, they, I've had a lot of feedback in the last two, three months. And I hope, I've urged all my neighbors to watch the meeting tonight so they could hear directly from you. And I recognize you're new into our, our city, but if you just came from Redlands, you're not that far removed. One, one of the questions I'm asked, and I've heard varying responses to, is my family has lived in our house for roughly thirty years. And we've never had an issue until the last probably year and a half. And it seems to be getting worse, not better. Why? Why has this suddenly become a, a, a crime that people are, seem to be acutely interested in?
The unfortunate truthful answer, and I'm just gonna be completely honest, is like you said, in the last year and a half, a lot of things have changed throughout the world. So a lot of people are no longer, like I said, looking for jobs anymore. They know the money's coming through the mail. Usually you get a high theft during Christmas time, when people, a lot of people sending money, gifts, cards, things like that. But now it's so often that money comes through the mail that people are constantly breaking into the mailboxes. And that's the unfortunate thing.
So they're after money primarily?
Majority of the time, yes. Even, even high volume of Amazon deliveries, because more people are purchasing Amazon more often. Nobody's going to the store anymore for the past two years. So there's so many things that are coming through the mail. Just in the past two years, the package volume has increased in the postal service by hundred percent in a couple offices, and that's just in a couple offices. So you can imagine what it is worldwide. So a lot of people are just, you get your, they call them porch thieves for your packages. They wait, I'm sure you guys see videos on the Ring doorbells, when they see the package drop, they run up and grab it. That's what they're doing nowadays. And that's the unfortunate thing. The only thing that I can, say you have an active community in neighborhood, that's stay active. Because there's, if there's more people around, it's gonna be less theft.
The interesting dilemma with our neighborhood is our house is the closest to the mailbox, but then there's a neighbor and there's a fence, and the mailbox system is just in front of that fence. So we've got security cameras all around our house, but we can just barely see the corner of the mailbox. So I've looked at, you know, videos of what's been going on down there, and we haven't been able to catch anything. The, what our neighborhood has done is the frustration level, especially after this last one, peaked to a level that we have some active neighbors, and they came and talked with me, and ultimately, one of them has a connection with, he, he, he's doing some developing in San Bernardino, and he's having mailboxes installed at his new development. So he talked with whoever the postal consultant was, and he said, you know, here's what you wanna buy. And then, you know, he'll work with you or whoever and get it keyed, and, and we're all pitching in, and we're paying for it ourselves. And that includes the disposal of the old box. So it can be done. It just means you gotta knock on doors and talk to people, and my neighborhood was so frustrated, I mean, people were ready to write checks on the spot. So that's what's happening with us, so it can't work. So, you know, if you have people come and complain to you about this kind of issue, you can tell them, there are neighborhoods, there's at least one, I'm sure there are more, that are kind of taking, you know, trying to work collaboratively with USPS to fix the problem as best we can. The that issue has created spill-off issues that I'm hearing more and more about as well. And that is, it means that every, every day or two, everybody in my neighborhood, including me, has to go down to the Loma Linda post office to collect our mail, which has gotta be annoying to the postal workers down there, but anyway, we, we do it. And I went down this afternoon about four o'clock, and the line was way back, way back. Now, one of the complaints that I've heard, I haven't seen evidence of in the last, I don't know, two, three weeks. And that is that there were, there are three stations, and a number of times, people would complain that only two of them were manned or staffed, and the third one was open. I haven't seen that for, you know, the last three weeks probably, for sure. But the lines, I'm sure you've seen by now, get pretty long there, too. And people are polite and friendly, and the staff you have down there are terrific. They never complain, they're always smiling, they're, so my hat's off to the staff, because they know me when I walk in, not because of city council, I'm, I'm a guy that's in picking my mail up all the time. And, and so you've got a great staff at the front desk there. One of, one of the questions that I've been asked is there are, there are three spots that you have people manning the table, and then there's a, there's room for another one, that where people put packages and stuff. And you wouldn't need four people out in the front all the time, but during peak hours, is it possible to put another station there?
Unfortunately, post offices are all designed diff, based off the level. Loma Linda's a level twenty, so there's an X amount of staff members that we're allotted per our budget. So we have the staff to put one there, but based off of the design of the post office, they won't install a fourth.
The, and, and so my question is, Loma Linda, if you drive down California, just as a starter, is expanding significantly. And if we're still depending on the same post office with three windows, that mess is gonna start, or that line is gonna start running out the door. And, and so I don't know how those judgments are made or by whom, but I'm predicting it's going to become a bigger problem than it is now. Just based on the, how many hundreds of homes do we have going in on those?
Close to a thousand units.
Increasing correctly.
Another thousand households.
And usually what happens is when a city expands, new development, new territory, they reconfigure the actual boundary and the level of the office. So then they increase the staffing and the budgeting for that office. So as you guys continue to grow and develop, they will have to reevaluate.
Is that based on the size of our city or the size of our, what you call our city?
The size of deliveries within the city.
The actual city or what you call nine-two-three?
Oh, the Redlands crossover?
Yeah.
Yeah, the actual delivery, so what you call the actual city.
So can, you can see where, if we take the mayor's concerns about being true to the city limits for postal addresses and deliveries, plus another thousand homes within the next year, you can see where we're trying to look for, we've got a problem now.
Of course.
And it's gonna get a whole lot worse. I'm concerned about. I don't know that, but.
No, that's a, a great concern to have. I mean, you look into the future, you don't look into now. But the, the issue is based off budget, budgeting and finance, that goes higher up than me. And the unfortunate thing, it goes to not only the installation head, the district manager, but it also goes to the postmaster general, and then they have to reevaluate everything else. So that's something that, the fight will continue on in regards to the concerns, but you just have to, whether it be myself or someone else, be after me, we just have to continue to remind them that, hey, Loma Linda is constantly growing. So we do have to do something different. And that's something that I have to address with finance, address with my address management system. Those are things that are constantly gonna show, continue to happen.
So my plea is that we're already growing, we're growing now, we're growing fast. And then if, if, you know, you look at the city boundaries and make some adjustments on, on what mail has a Loma Linda address versus Redlands, this thing could explode. Okay, now, the last point that unfortunately you have no control over, and I've discovered we don't have any control over it either, but another problem is the parking lot in front of the post office. I've never seen it full. I've seen it more full than I ever have in the last few months. But there's always spots that you can park in. One of the concerns that people have is they see this big medical building going up right in front of you.
Yes.
Which was property that was originally owned by the US Postal Service. And that's gonna increase traffic. And the other complaint that I've heard for years is the exit from the post office empties right into a curve that's a busy curve.
Correct.
And traffic backs up in different directions depending on how much traffic there is. And I, and I know that the, at least my understanding is that there is ingress and egress out of that medical practice onto Barton Road, right? But ultimately, some of that's gonna feed into that curve. And what is already a mess is gonna become a bigger mess, too.
Yes.
I don't know what anybody can do about that. And, because post office is federal property, and they own both those parcels and elected to sell one of them. And so we, we've, we've got a emerging mess on our hands. And so if we talk about you needing to grow the Loma Linda post office along with the city of Loma Linda, we've got some challenges we need to collaborate on.
Definitely. And that's something that, again, comes from the planning and development department.
Sure, sure.
But I'll reach out to them and see what we can do. Because I know, since I've been there, that building has been an issue. Just from creating a huge sewer problem within the postal, post office, that we have to see what we have to do next. So I'll definitely bring that up, too.
Well, if any of your colleagues want to come and set us straight, we're, they will be welcome.
They're probably afraid of you. They usually don't do that.
Thank you very much for coming and taking our questions.
No, thank you for the invitation.
I hope it's giving you some context for your new job.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, there's a lot of work that has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I hope this is the last question, because you don't, you don't have to answer this one. But when is Sunday delivery coming back?
All right.
So that's, yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Some of us don't even know about that, because we don't get our mail delivered anymore.
Thank you very much, sir, for your time. We appreciate you.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. You guys have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, before we move on to item number two, I wanna back up. We did get a, an email, so we'll count this as a public comment. And that email was distributed, a copy was distributed to all the council members, and the city clerk is gonna note that, so we'll, we'll note that in the public comment area. All right, moving on to item number two, we have a couple of proclamations. The first is for DMV Donate Life Month, which is April. And here to accept is Ms. Ina Strickland?
Ina Strickland.
Ina Strickland, Ambassador with One Legacy.
Yes, sir.
So we have here a proclamation. And I'll just read a, a couple of lines here from it. "Whereas organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as the greatest expression of compassion to those in need, and each year millions of lives are saved and healed by donors of organs, tissue, marrow, and blood." And then several more wherashes as we go down here. But we are absolutely thrilled to support Donate Life Month in the city of Loma Linda. Do you have a couple of comments you'd like to share with us?
Yeah, thank you. I am Ina Strickland. Like you said, I am an ambassador for eleven years for One Legacy Donate Life. I donated a kidney thirty-four years ago to my daughter, who's gonna be thirty-eight this year. She's on her third kidney transplant, and that wouldn't have happened if it wasn't because of generosity of donor families that at the time of death of their loved ones have decided to donate the organs, tissue, and eyes of their family members. So I encourage everyone to become a donor. You can do it at the DMV, of course, it's called DMV Donate Life. Most of our signups come from the DMV, more than that, ninety percent of the registered donors come from, from the DMV. But you can also go to www.donatelifeCalifornia.org. My daughter had her second transplant here at, at Loma Linda. So Loma Linda Children's Hospital has always been a special place for me. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you for being a donor yourself. Are there any questions or comments from the council? If you'd like, I'll put my mask on, you can come up here and I'll.
I'm vaccinated. I'm just being careful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Our next proclamation is for Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I believe we have somebody on Zoom. Ms. Hillary Steeson Ray, here to accept on behalf of community and events. She's, I'm sorry, she's the community and events coordinator with Children's Network. Is she on the line?
Yes, hello.
Hey, how are you?
I'm doing great. I'm excited to be here. I wish I was in person, but the county's not quite yet ready to let us come out, so we're all vaccinated, so, next year.
Okay, well, definitely, we will look forward to seeing you next year. In this proclamation, I'll read against the, the first section of it. "Whereas in recognition of the right of all children to receive the care, protection, and guidance a family provides, the right to be free of harm and to have their physical, emotional, and educational needs met, the state and federal governments have proclaimed, proclaimed April twenty-twenty-one as Child Abuse Prevention Month for the purposes of promoting community involvement in preventing child abuse." And there are several more wherashes there with some other information. But on behalf of the city of Loma Linda, we present you with this proclamation that we support child abuse prevention. Do you have any comments you'd like to?
I just wanna thank the city of Loma Linda, who's always been. I just want to thank, um, the city of Loma Linda, who's always been such a strong supporter of all our initiatives and and just ready to take, um, any leaps and bounds and be there to support the kids and, and take care of the kids in our community. And, uh, we really count on you as being that sort of, um, in the forefront partner. And so, um, we really appreciate the work we do with you. And I just want to remind everybody again that you are the eyes and ears of your community. And so if you see something, um, you think you have a lot, go ahead and, and call into two one, you can call anonymously and report child abuse and just let a professional double check on the family, especially, uh, right now, families are so separated still, kids have been in school and maybe not just, you know, a couple of days. Just make sure we're all just prepared for our community and, and working out all the chaos.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, uh, we will get this off to you. Uh, thank you for calling in and, and, uh, your participation.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on to item number three, this will be a public hearing, Council Bill O. Twenty twenty-one dash zero seven. This is the first reading and setting of the second reading. Amending chapter seventeen point eight zero pertaining to terms of office for the historical commission members. This has been a topic we've, we've gone through every council meeting since January. So, do we have a presentation on it? Sorry.
Sure. This, this council bill will, as, as you said, establish a term limits for the historic mission, commission members. Um, the way it's written right now is, uh, at the next meeting, when you do the, the second reading. We will also then, um, determine what those terms will be. What that does is then should the council decide to change those terms or the, the length of the terms. We don't need to go back to, uh, an ordinance, we can just do that via resolution. Um, you have, you have the ordinance in front of you. It's pretty, pretty clean, pretty, uh, self-evident if there are any questions.
Yeah, I have one. Um, says for such terms as shall be established by the city council resolution and then subsequently. Uh, a resolution will come back to the city council to set the term length for the commission. So who does that?
Next meeting, when you get the second reading, you will approve this and then you'll approve the resolution. Setting it, which I'm, I'm assuming four years with some, some form of a stagger term.
Yeah, so we've talked about terms and numbers of members. Um, is there a charge to this committee?
As far as?
As far as what are they supposed to do? How often are they supposed to meet?
They, yes, and actually part of our, our municipal code covers the historic preservation and historic commission and their functions. Primarily, they, they resolve, work around, um, area D. Uh, we're on our homes off California and that, and that is the Mission Historic District. So, um, there's certain activities that they make sure that we follow. Um, preservation as, as required, also that as new construction comes in. Um, they get to weigh in on, um, design. And what goes on out there, at least even before they get to planning commission, so that we do stay consistent to the historic roots of the community. And then also, um, any building that's more than fifty years old in the city. If there's demolish or major changes to, primarily that happens around the university. I think some of you might remember when they did Franz Hall at the,
Loma Linda Academy.
At the academy. They, they weigh in.
Credit Union too.
The credit union as well. So they weigh in on preservation, um, recommendations. They are a recommending body, not a, a deliberative body. And so they will forward recommendations to the planning commission and to the council.
So it comes historical committee to the planning committee and then whatever the planning committee decides gets forwarded to city council.
Correct. Plan, planning commission does have the, does have the, uh, the ability to approve certain projects. Um, so they are deliberative in that, in that sta- position. So some things go from historic to planning. Some things go from historic planning to council, but historic is a recommending body only.
Okay. They're all from the city of Loma Linda. This is Loma Linda historically.
I have no idea.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I have no idea. I've never had a councilman show, other than the joint meetings, never had a councilman show up. You can volunteer.
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can, I can look back and let you know.
Similar to the planning commission, I'm not sure if we assign somebody to that particular.
The planning commission, you can't because, um, they.
Okay.
Yeah, the planning commission, because it's deliberative and stuff, comes to you for approval. Um, we, we've always kind of kept the two separate.
Okay, um, so we had the questions from the council. I'm going to open the public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this topic? Please raise your hand via Zoom. We do have one taker. I'm not sure who it is, so you'll have to announce your name and. Are you there? We have somebody who wants to comment on this topic. Okay, we can, we got you. We can hear you. Hey, Dick.
Go back to those and say, okay, they were asked, you want to continue? Or would you like to get off the interview? And if it was, then I would have filled it and then recommendations that, uh, for those particular three, uh, terms left. Once they were filled or, uh, what's available anyway. We've got to say, kind of, for approval for the next three years. Now, this happens with each one of these terms. And it was over, uh, a three-year period, so every year you get one back. Either it was from the air commission, but in our committee. Anyway, this was where the back and I, I know you got to the point where every year we had to fill out a form for the state. Uh, I think like the council does to disclose what properties you may have. Uh, as far as any conflict of interest type transfer. And that, where that, that was taken away with it or what, I don't know. But, um, if these things were in the font of the ocean and on the record. With handles here now, what's attached to it, I don't know. And there are several of their, I mean, district officials that are aware of this. The things that are, uh, out like that, and I would suggest is that to make it simple for the city of the boy with the new one. If it's on your ID year, you want to run for your three-year terms. Then when you put those in, those go up on, on the ID years. And when you even, whether it were approved three years, come up with their three years. It's a little easier going a lot of those up this time. So this is a suggestion I'm waiting to comment to.
Okay.
And, uh, if I can, one other time, I tried to add on a post, uh, master was there. My suggestion is one, uh, two, thanks, one suggestion, one question. People have problems with their mailbox or think they will or, uh, handle size delivery. Put a, a camera, video camera. And if they have to be big, they make small ones, it's pretty well not be seen. And put it to wherever the box, uh, mailbox is, you know. It could be from, uh, the roof line out there, maybe it's a different, um, distance, this is, you can go through a mailbox closer. And when you get a recorder, don't get this straight recorder, get a motion activated. They don't, they go out and try and redo what was there and, uh, everything you said there. Based on the memory, I would, another question that I would suggest. If the post office has extra boxes that aren't being used. Maybe you see people get their one floating into. The post office could put the mail in the post office box there and then just go in there. Pick it up, and that would save, you know, the lighting so long. I remember it that way. So when that team, my box is open, I don't know. But, uh, had to think about that when you shared it again, but it just, uh, it just go trick. Anyway, that's my answer this evening. You guys keep up the good work.
Okay, thank you, Dick. Good to hear from you. You too, sir. Do we have any other comments? I see none, so we're going to go ahead and close the public comment section and I'll entertain a motion on this.
Mister Mayor, I move Council Bill O dash twenty twenty-one dash O seven. Introduced on the first reading and set second reading for May eleventh.
We have a first, we have a second. Second by Dr. Leonard. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. The motion is to introduce Council Bill number O dash twenty twenty-one dash zero seven. On first reading, set the second reading for May eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Amending chapter seventeen point eight zero pertaining to terms for historical commission membership. Councilman Gendal?
No.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Riggsby?
Yes.
Mayor Pertemore Day, Daly?
Aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
And it passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, uh, sans number twelve, which we have already pulled. Um, I do believe we have a treasures report update. Is that correct, Sonia?
That's correct. Good evening. Um, in the treasures report on the previous month, I, um, overlooked changing the previous month balance, so the actual change in cash balance from last month to this month is only six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-two cents. Overall, nothing has changed other than the change from one month to the next.
Okay, thank you very much. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the seat.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve it?
I'll move to approve, but, uh,
Second.
I'd like, two items I'd like to pull.
Okay.
Um, eight, C, and thirteen.
What?
Thirteen. Thirteen.
Okay. So, uh, I guess we'll start with eight C.
Uh, yeah, simple question, uh, to the city manager. I mean, we're talking about repeaters because we've progressed to these kind of radio-controlled, uh, water meters. Um, which tells me we're not finished with that. How, how are we progressing on upgrading all the water meters in the city?
We have thirteen left.
Thirteen left, and we need the two repeaters to?
Yes.
The, the way the meter.
Riggsby's house, minimum, because he's kind of off the beaten path.
Yeah, the, the way it works is the meter sends out signal every ten second. And, and so, and so we need that loc- location in the hill to, to accept that signal and bounce it back, I mean, via, uh, our fiber optic, come back to the city hall.
Okay, okay.
That's why we need repeater.
I haven't heard any com- I complained, but I haven't heard any complaints about, uh, increased water bills since we changed that up.
It's great because if they complain, we actually print out their water consumption by every hours. So we can tell them how much water they use and the reason why they, a lot of times it's irrigation. They, they, they turn on the irrigation or they didn't set that, that, their landscaper set their.
These are more accurate readings too, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so thirteen houses to go.
Thirteen.
That's great.
How close are we to that customer feedback thing on the website where they can come online and look it up themselves?
That's, that's my, that's my next go, next goal is, is, is to do that. So the homeowner can lock on to the system, I mean, to the computer and, and check their address.
Okay. How about eight D?
This emergency operations center isn't the one that we have here, is it?
Yes.
Okay. Um, since we're, we're extending the fire alarm system, just a general question. Do we need to replace or do anything with the fire alarm system for rest of the building?
The, the rest of the building already have it. So what this portion is, is a new EOC that we addition that we need to install this, uh, fire alarm system.
Got it. Part of my question is like, does the current system need any repair for rest of the building?
It's our routine. We have a, a contractor, this is the, the company that we hired to do. They do this, uh, checking every couple of months.
Why do we need a fire alarm in the fire station?
Because they are on call, so.
Okay, I think, I think we got the answer on that one. Item number eleven. Eleven B, I'm sorry. I'm guessing that's probably like servers and equipment like that.
Got it. Yeah, two questions for that. Uh, so I saw surplus, so I just wanted to make sure that it was outdated and not because we bought something extra. But also just, um, out of general curiosity, what happens to these items? Got it. Thank you.
Okay, and item thirteen.
Thirteen. Mister Fire Chief. Yeah, no, it's. Yeah, well. I'm trying to live up to my reputation here.
Okay.
Real quick, is that part of the consent calendar or is that a separate council bill?
No, it's consent.
Okay.
So, just to kind of summarize what I read in the staff report. Um, um, for these big fire emergencies, we seem to see more and more of in California these days. That, uh, uh, the state of California is willing to let us use some of their equipment with the understanding that we staff it.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you don't want to slap a gift horse in the mouth, so that sounds like a good idea. Um, but my concern had to do with, with, and this is going to be a big four-wheel drive rugged suspension. So you can go off into the south hills or wherever we need to go.
Yeah, so this is, this is a little bit smaller. This would be kind of like a squad size, um, kind of like the squad that we're purchasing. So like we have, you know, we have the, the great big fire engines.
Yeah.
We have the brush engines that are a little bit smaller.
Okay.
So this is going to be even smaller than that.
So will it carry water?
Yes. Um, limited amount, I'm not sure. I'd have to look.
That's okay.
Says in here somewhere, but we're talking probably two, three hundred gallons compared to, you know, like our brush engine is probably
Okay.
five to six hundred.
So my primary concern was, until I got to the last paragraph. Um, because my understanding is this is, we're going to station, put this in a station.
Yeah.
And then we'll use it as we have the opportunity or need to.
Yeah.
But it's going to have to be staffed as well as the other fire equipment that we have is going to have to be staffed. So I'm thinking, well, then we've got firemen that are on call. Are we going to pay them to be on call and stay in town? And, you know, where, where, where's the dollars and cents coming into this? And then at the very end, it says staffing costs associated with mutual aid responses is subject to, that's where I have a question. To reimbursement as delineated. is subject to, that's where I have a question, to reimbursement as delineated by the California Fire Assistance Agreement. Well, when the state says they're subject to reimbursing you, that's not saying we will reimburse your staffing costs. Am I just being cynical or?
No, I think.
There's a reason to be concerned there.
No, I I think, you know, due diligence on this thing, no question. So this this is a this is a pretty common thing that we're doing. There's several departments that do this throughout the whole state. So the whole idea is to help out the state of California on wildland fires.
Right, right.
And it's basically, we'll give you an engine in exchange for you to basically provide it when we need it. So it's basically a zero cost. I think what their their caveat, they're saying there is if we, if they request and we go, then they pay. If for some reason somebody else asks us to do something and we go and help them, the state's not gonna pay for that.
Okay.
If we go somewhere else out just because we decide we're gonna help out somebody else and it's a cost, well, then we're gonna be on hook. Now, that really never happens. It would be a weird thing for us to do that. Most our stuff, our local agreements, you know, everything we do is pretty much paid for. You know, we have twelve-hour agreements with all our neighbors that, you know, we'll give them twelve free hours. If it's over, then they'll start covering, we'll do the same for them, all this. So this this is pretty much, this is simply they they give us to us to maintain and all that, they'll cover the maintenance. I think you'll see in staff works up to the first hundred dollars in repair, we cover the first hundred and then we build a state for the rest. And the idea is it's a prioritization on our part. Obviously, we can't send everything out on fires all the time because then we'd have nothing here for the city of Loma Linda. And so we prioritize, like I always tell the guys, when we prioritize, the city of Loma Linda comes first and then we go from there. This is gonna probably slip in because of our agreements, this is gonna slip in second place. So our first agreement is to always provide for the city of Loma Linda. And then if the state's asking for help, the first thing we're gonna be willing to staff and send out is gonna be this type six engine. And so if they're calling for it, then we're gonna do everything we can to staff it and send it out and with knowledge that'll be covered. Then then we'll go on into the brush engine or the type one engine if those things are being requested and we can staff it, then we'll look at it, but it's all basically a balance of what we can provide. So this isn't going to be something any different than what we have today, it's gonna be another piece apparatus that's sitting there. If we get a fire in the south hills or anywhere else in the city and we can use it, then we're fully allowed to throw our guys on it and send them up there and and fight a fire for our needs. And so we can use it if we, when we get this, the squad that's gonna replace our current suburban and this new one, we're gonna consider this our backup squad. So anytime that squad goes out of service, they'll they'll use this as kind of the backup and that's all allowed to be able to use. So it's it's kind of a new thing that we're getting a brand new piece of apparatus for free. When the state calls, they pay for it, no matter how long it's gone. If we do anything local, in-house, anything like that with it, then obviously that's on us. And those are decisions we'll have to make, but if the state's calling, then then they'll be covering it.
No, that makes sense. And you understand my, I'm not skeptical of this, except, you know, we, our city has a tight budget and we're trying to deal with multiple budgetary issues. I just want to be sure that there aren't hidden costs that that we haven't, that I wasn't smart enough to figure out on my own.
Yeah, no, and that's where that's where I say I had a feeling this one might come up, because when you look at it, you're like, well, wait a minute, we're agreeing to do what now for what's this agreement? And like I said, if this was some one-off, not done, I'd be a little more concerned, but this is done. You know, Colton actually has a type one engine, a water tender, and now it's gonna have, so they actually have three of these what we call OES type of apparatus. Different departments will have it. Because they, I mean, you can get a, all kinds of different, you can get a hazmat, you can get a rescue rig, you can get all kinds of stuff from the state if you can show that you can obviously provide. You gotta be diligent because we can have everything, we have all staff of OES stuff and then we send it all out when they request it and then we have nobody for city of Loma Linda. Obviously, that's not, you know, our goal. And so I I think at a minimum, we can staff this and send it out. Even in a busy season, this last season, we sent out, you know, our guys on brush engines and type one quite a bit. This will simply be first priority. But there's even no guarantee, the the only issue becomes if we're constantly saying no, then they're gonna say, well, wait a minute, you know, we we need it back, but I think we should be able to provide that.
Articulate answers.
Excellent.
Clarified it for me, thank you.
Dr. Rigsby wants to know what color it's gonna be.
Yeah, how much how much is it worth?
How much it worth? Probably a couple hundred thousand, that's probably, well, with the tank on it, yeah, we're probably pushing three hundred thousand, brand new, which is, they're all brand new, this is something they're just rolling out.
How did we get this? Did we ask for it or did they just dangle it?
Um, so these type sixes, providing these type six that are small ones is kind of a new thing. And so the OES rep for our area came to our county chief's meeting and mentioned, and their desire would be if enough departments were interested, you know, you guys know the whole strike team idea, five engines and a strike team leader and all that. And so he felt if they, if we could have five in this departments in this area, then anytime they need it for, they can call this area to put together a strike team and kind of all of us who work together, go together type thing.
So they dangled it in front of us.
So they dangled it and, you know, I kind of threw out, hey, I'm interested if there's four other that are interested and there are four other departments that were interested in it also, so.
Is that how Colton got their type one?
Yeah, they've had that for quite a while, their type one. In fact, if I'm not mistaken, the city of San Bernardino had a type one and it was old and we, when I was there, we said we really don't want anymore and I think it got reassigned to the city of Colton. So we're probably talking back in the in the nineties.
Okay.
And then just recently, city of Chino had a water tender that they didn't want to utilize anymore and city of Colton stepped up and said, we'll take the water tender and then in this new thing. So that seemed a little bit much for me, but you know, that's their, you know, three pieces apparatus is a lot.
I was just wondering if Eloise got credit for giving them a fi- fire engine, but that was a different one.
No, I think she got credit for that one brush engine she got, but that's probably not on the OES stuff.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just trying to figure out if Colton ever pays for a fire apparatus.
Yeah, they're they're getting a lot for free.
So you gave up Colton, who are the other three?
Uh, if I can remember, it's Loma Linda, Colton, Rialto, I think Big Bear, and I wanna say maybe Ranch, I can't remember who the fifth one is. Yeah, so and it and it won't match, it'll be yellow, you know, so all the state stuff is a is a yellow type color, so it'll be a one-off. So when you see it around, you'll know that that's what it is.
And will it, obviously, fire is what it's designed for, but is it designed for anything a little more off-road or rugged?
Yeah, so it'll.
Service up to the hills?
Yeah, and that was really kind of, like you say, when, if it had been a type one or even a type six they were offering, I probably would have passed.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, type three, but a type six, you know, we discussed as a command staff and we're like that, that would be a nice vehicle to get up into our south hills, even a little bit better than our type three that's off-road. And so it'll have off-road capabilities, they they have it, I think even in here's a list of equipment that they put on it and so it'll it'll be simply, the only thing that we'll put on is when we want to, need to roll it as a backup, we'll have to throw our medic gear on it.
Well, we'll have to put radios and stuff on there, right, through Confire?
Yeah, they they come with the VHF model, you know, which is the statewide radio, so we will have to put in a, the eight hundred, which is, you know, the one we use for comm center and everything, so we'll put that radio in it. So we're, that's probably the only thing we're gonna have to fund, which we have some money for that, but that's really our only cost, which then when we get rid of it, we'll keep that.
Can it traverse the ridge the other guy got stuck on?
I don't know, when it gets here, we'll uh we'll see what that thing can do.
It's another one you gotta drive.
Yeah, exactly.
And we get dibs dibs in the next parade?
You already got the the tiller, right? You got that?
I got the tiller and I get the, I get the Model A Ford every time the parade runs. Except you can have it now. I will defer to the mayor.
I'll walk.
Yeah, yeah, once we get the tiller truck here, though, we'll get you guys all out.
You're talking about just joyriding, we're not talking about parades.
So Chief, go ahead, give it, give the council the status of the ladder trucks and the squad.
Yeah, so the ladder truck, the ladder truck, they're supposed to be going back, in fact, next week, I believe it is, for what we call the final inspection, so it should be all done. They'll go back and just double check on the aerial that is everything that we requested, if there's anything off. They they do three trips, they'll do a beginning trip kind of before the construction, what we call pre-construction trip, in which they will go and kind of talk about some specifics. They'll do a mid-construction, which is a little bit better than mid, which they did a couple of months ago, and that's where they'll make sure that it's progressing as we want. And now this will be the last one and if all is good, they'll sign off that, hey, it matches all the specs we requested and then it'll be a matter of that that company then shipping it out to us. So I'd expect by May, mid-May, at the latest, we should have the tiller here. The squad is pretty much about on the same schedule, so I would guess by the end of May, we should have both here. Then we'll have to start doing some, you know, lettering, get some radios put in and then the tiller will actually not go in service for several months because obviously it's such a different piece of apparatus. We're gonna have a pretty robust training on it. We, I think we have a couple of guys who are familiar with driving, so that's good, but we we're hoping to partner with a couple of our neighboring cities, Redlands is getting a tiller. So they've kind of been talking about just kind of training together. The city of Ontario has talked to us about maybe, they have tillers, but actually putting on some.
Tiller for a rookie like me?
A tiller, that's the, remember?
It's a big thing we just spent a bunch of money on.
Yeah, that's the big ladder one where you steer from the back and the front and uh, yeah, so that will be, so because it steers like that, it requires a little bit more training than.
Sure.
A normal.
I would think we should have, each councilman is on call a month at a time to drive the rear end of that thing.
It's fun, we had some in San Bernardino and and it's it's fun to drive, you know.
Yeah, I wanna.
There's a famous Seinfeld.
Yes, I remember that, yeah.
I wanna sleep the freeway with it.
Yeah, and so you, when you, when you have the the driver of the front and the driver of the rear who really work well together, you can maneuver that thing.
Unless you have Kramer in the back.
Yeah, yeah, that could be, that could be disastrous.
The the, what is this, a nineteen-story building now? What, the new?
Yeah.
Sixteen.
How how far up does this thing come?
So it definitely won't reach all the way.
Yeah.
They're working on the plans when it was doing, if everything happened like it's supposed to, they're supposed to be, obviously, it's one of those things, the closer you are, the building, the higher you can get up, the farther away. So it's supposed to be able to that first platform where, you know, it's got multi-level, that first one you get to from the Barton side, they're supposed to be able to access and get up to that area. And so it gave a, and that was kind of the the goal, was to be able to kind of get there so that if need be, we could access rescue stuff, at least kind of a midway point on the building. And that was kind of our goal in purchasing it and then the fire code allowing us to do that. So hopefully it all works out when that day comes and the building's obviously done, when the truck gets here and its access is all right, we'll see and make, see if it actually worked out like the plan was, but that's the whole idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'll be interesting.
Thanks, Sam.
Good. Any other questions on apparatus? No, okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, so we had a first from Dr. Daly and a second from Dr. Rigsby. Madam Clerk, I think we can call the roll.
The motion is to adopt the items on the consent calendar for the city council minus item number twelve, the request for supplemental appropriation. Councilman Leonard?
Aye.
Councilman Gendal?
Aye.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Per temporary Daley?
Aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number fourteen, Council Bill O two zero two one dash zero five, this is the second reading and roll call vote for an amendment to the Loma Linda Municipal Code to establish regulations for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units in accordance with state law. Well, you said everything I was gonna say.
Okay, then I move it.
First and second, Madam Clerk. Thanks, Conrad.
And I apologize, the second was from?
Uh, Dr. Rigsby, right? Oh, you moved it.
Leonard, thank you. Okay, and the motion is to adopt Council Bill number O dash twenty twenty-one dash zero five, an amendment to the Loma Linda Municipal Code. The ordinance is entitled an ordinance of the city council of the city of Loma Linda, amending the Loma Linda Municipal Code Development Code Amendment Number P twenty dash one eighty-three to establish regulations for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. Councilman Gendal?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard?
Aye.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Per temporary Daley?
Aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
And it's adopted, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any new business? Any reports of council members?
All right, small report, so we had a water policy meeting, same old, same old. We had less than average rainfall in the past three months, so still on track to run out of water in fifty years.
That's better than I thought. Let's have a shower.
Anybody else? Um, I'll report that, from my past position on the California League of Cities and my current status as a representative on the Public Safety Policy Committee, I was asked to join a task force group on public policy or public safety policy that's been meeting over the last couple of months. And these weren't necessarily members of the bigger public safety group, but select members from various cities across the state. And we have been looking at, hearing presentations on several new pieces of public safety legislation. And if you think that mailbox theft is a big deal, stand by to stand by, because the way the state is going, there's gonna be plenty more crime that will be afoot. Lots of lots of great initiatives, like the state wants to decriminalize jaywalking. Apparently, that is something that we can't have in twenty twenty-one and and several other rather scary propositions, so stand by to see what happens in this legislative year, it's gonna be interesting.
That's the first one I agree with.
You would.
I think the most dangerous place to be is in a crosswalk.
Well, you will be happy to know that someday you will be able to run freely anywhere you want, potentially across the freeway if you desire.
Libertarians rejoice.
Yes. That's my report. Seeing no others, we will, sorry.
I talked to the city manager earlier, there, he's already well aware of the fact that I've had a number of complaints about the lights in the tennis courts at the Leonard Bailey Park are out, so we've had some difficulty getting them changed out, go ahead.
Yes, at the last city council meeting, the city council did approve for the city to purchase, to get a new lighting at the Leonard Bailey Park. And I would like to report that it will be in within three weeks, usually takes six to twelve, I mean, six to eight weeks for it to be made and delivered, so we have three more weeks left and then the city staff will install it ourselves, so.
So the lights are on their way and in the meantime, you have a temporary solution, right?
Well, I went out and counted myself, we have seven lights that that go out, that's out right now, so we only have like two or three that we can replace, so we can just do that.
Okay.
Or we just watch, wait for all of them that will come in and replace all at one time.
And then I've had several people in my part of the city have noted the Mountain View off-ramps and on-ramps look pretty hairy right now.
Yes, I I was out there this morning and I saw it, I will call the contractor, we already sprayed sprayed the weeds, so if you notice, it looked brown right now, so now I have to come out and pull it, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any reports of officers?
Yes, sir, I do. Since you talk about pub- public safety, I would like Captain Matt Griffin to introduce our new lieutenant, please.
Mister Mayor, honorable members of the council, as I'm sure you guys are aware, we had a little bit of an unexpected retirement here recently. Lieutenant Al Daniel, who came to us from our aviation division, got an opportunity to actually go fly helicopters, which is his first love, and so he he decided to do that, so he's flying around the sky somewhere around Brawley, maybe right now. which is his first love, and so he, he decided to do that. So he's flying around the sky somewhere around Brawley, uh, maybe right now, um, working for an air ambulance company. So the sheriff just recently, uh, transferred Lieutenant Jim Considine to us. Um, he's, he's actually a tenured lieutenant. He's been a lieutenant for several years. Um, he was the unit commander of our intelligence division, so he brings some special skills, uh, to us. He and I went to the academy together, so we've known each other for, for thirty years now. Um, we, we have a wonderful relationship and I'm really excited to have him here. He's been, been with us for about two weeks, uh, and he's already jumped in. He's handling a variety of, of, uh, different issues throughout the city. So I'll just let him say hi to you.
Good evening. Happy to meet all you. I got to meet the city manager already and Conrad behind me and, um, uh, so we, it's been good. I'm happy to be here. It's back to patrol station. I got to do the, the intelligence world for quite some yet time, so like I said, I've been on thirty-one years. Loved the department here for some time, so happy to be part of Loma Linda now.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any questions? Yeah. Actually, the mayor and myself got promoted on the same day to lieutenant. Yeah, so, you know, for a little bit, so good to meet you all.
Thank you.
I have a couple more.
Oh.
I would like to announce that this coming Thursday, we will have vaccination at the, our senior center. Will be a vaccine center here at a senior center at, from, from ten to two. So, and the vaccine will be Pfizer. It was scheduled to be Johnson and Johnson, but they changed it at the last minute. So, uh, but you need to sign up with the county at the county website, uh, for, to get vaccination here. Next is the, uh, this coming Sunday, from nine to, to one o'clock, we can have E W A S pickup here at the city hall parking lot. So the resident are welcome to, to come by and drop off their old computer, microwave, uh, uh, lamps. So bring them over and we'll pick it up for you. Yes, sir.
And Councilman Gendal will be able to, uh,
From nine to one.
examine the, uh, surplus equipment we're dropping off there?
Yes. And then the last thing is that the city hall will be open for public this coming Monday, the nineteenth, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
How, do you know how secure that E W A S is? Do they waste it on sta- I mean, do they obliterate it on site or?
Oh, no, no, no. We, we have a, a staff from, from the, the company that, that pick all this up on site. So you come in, pull over, open your trunk, the staff take the, the electronic waste out of your trunk, put it on the pallet and they haul it out the same day.
So like, I mean, like if I have an old hard drive in my garage from ten years ago and I don't know what's on it, do they nuke it pretty good or what do they do?
After the explorer.
Well, I'll just have it, it'll be the same as Hunter Biden's company and nobody will look at it at all.
That, that, that's why, I, I don't know, sir.
It goes to the.
I don't think they have time to go look at it.
It goes to the FBI trash bin?
All right, with that, we're adjourned. Okay, not so fast. We got to move into our, uh, I guess we'll do the housing authority agenda next. Mister City Manager, do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move along. Uh, the only scheduled items is the, are the consent calendar items. We have a motion. And a second. Madam Clerk?
And the motion is to approve the items on the housing authority consent calendar. Councilman Gendal?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard?
Aye.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Per temporary Daley?
Aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. No new business? Any chair member reports? Reports of officers? We will be adjourned from the housing authority moving into the successor agency. Mister City Manager, do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any reports from the, or comments from the public? Seeing none, moving on to the consent calendar there. We have a first. And a second. Madam Clerk?
And the motion is to approve the items on the successor agency consent calendar. Councilman Gendal?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Per temporary Daley?
Aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
If passes, thank you.
That concludes, um, this meeting. Thank you.